Hello, everybody. We waited until seven o'clock because that's when we say we start. And when the crowd comes in at 6:59, we don't want to have already begun. So we want everyone to be able to be here for the full meeting. And with that, we will start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Legs behind you, like, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on one issue and will not end the struggle for liberty and justice for all.
Role call is different today because we have a brand new member. It's our first day, but she's here for audits. So Talia Michaels is joining us as our first ex officio student member of the school board, a senior here at Clayton A. Bell. And we give her a speech. Blackbird, welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I wanted to thank the board for making this possible and Mr. McCree for giving me the honor of serving the board this year.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Very happy to have you.
And otherwise, we are completely here as a board of six currently. Is there anything anyone would like to present for a good order?
This wall is nice.
Yeah. Nice to see the kid at home in school. Thank you to the staff and teachers and everyone who made that pass school. It was a huge effort. Many, many people spent many, many hours getting everything ready. We're going to go to item, sorry, my, 2.1 is the opportunity for the public to be heard. And I just want to read aloud that we have a new statement here. Y'all know that there are two opportunities for the public to be heard. This point, students, we want to put out school board meetings or business meetings, which are held in public during regular board meetings. A portion of the agenda is set aside for the opportunity for the public to be heard. This is a listening opportunity for the board to hear any areas of general concern, but the board does not discuss or respond to questions at that time. Remarks should be concise, limited to three minutes per speaker. Please come to the podium to speak to the board, opening by identifying yourself and your reason for addressing the board. And note, please consider, we are a community. Our goal is to model a respectful and recordious forum. Comments are not to involve individual personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should contact the superintendent or their designated during regular business hours. And the matter will then be brought to the board in executive session if necessary. And if public comments exceed the time allotted or do not model stability, they will be halted. Thank you. So with that, not to scare anyone off, but just to let it be understood, if there are any members of the public that would like to speak, please, you are truly welcome to come to the podium. Okay. We will move on to item three, the superintendent's report.
Okay. So I do get to talk about school opening, and I want to first off, thank our, all of our 12-month employees at work. So that's our maintenance, our administration, our food service that came in, that's Paul Franchini, our transportation director supervisor mechanics. I know I'm going to miss people, all of our custodians, our maintenance. I mean, it takes a lot of people to get this building up and running. When everyone leaves, those people are here, and that starts right away. We had a student worker this year as well, Cody Best. I'm going to thank him. He really was diligent in his work. So without the work and hard work of those people in 95, 100-degree weather in this building, we would not be open. And so really, yes. He's part of facilities maintenance. So all of those people together really helped make all of this work. And, you know, we want to thank them for all that they've done. Now, I also get to thank all the staff members who came in over the summer, who worked on our compass teams, who came into curriculum work. They also spent a little bit more time over the year to be able to get this going. And then all the staff who worked on their own time, because there is a lot of beach time and river time where everybody's camping and also doing lesson plans and doing all these things, because they truly never stop working. Everybody's always planning for the next year. So I want to thank them because honestly, we had a very nice opening. Our kids are back, our staff are back. And, you know, I don't have much to say, I don't want to jinx it, but it really was a sound opening. It's thanks to everybody who was part of our facilities and our team here. So that's off to all of them. Opening as well, I know that, you know, I wasn't really talking a lot about COVID, but we still have some aspects of COVID that were continuing. One of those things is we did do clinics last year through our pharmacy connection. We are going to offer another clinic this year. There is the booster coming up that is for people who want it. They can come get it. If not, they don't have to. But it is an easy opportunity that we've offered, and we still want to continue to offer that. We'll have clinic care October 15th for our school community. So, you know, if it's here and people want to use it, they're more than welcome to do it. But we are continuing that process of offering those boosters and things like we've done in the past.
You say school community, who is eligible?
Anyone who lives in Voorheesville, anyone outside of, if they want it, they can come get it. When we've done it before, we had people all over the place coming in. It wasn't just our students and staff. It was people, goodness, I don't know why it does that. It was people from all over the community, from different parts of the county. So if anyone's really eligible to come in, it's plenty of people into the public.
What date again?
October 15th. We're going to be sharing all this information on the website. We're posting it out. I just want to finalize it here, so.
You have both, or all, both types of boosters?
I, it's really up to Miller Pharmacy. I'm not sure yet what they're going to offer us. It really is all dependent on what they have.
I'm sure you'll at least have Pfizer, because that's the one.
Yeah. They typically always have everything available. They've been, yeah, Miller, it's Miller's Pharmacy. They've been really, really good to us and have all the different boosters that are around.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to offer them again. And besides that, you know, our sports teams are up and running, our clubs are getting started back up this week. We had our play auditions going on. I mean, it really is full force and right back into it. So we're pretty excited. We have homecoming coming up at the end of this month. So it feels like school again, and it's nice to be back. Our strategic plan, this is going to be something that's going to be here every time. I do want to start talking about that. And our strategic plan really goes back to our vision and mission statement of the school, right? It's what guides everything we do. And there's four goal statements that the board, sorry, five, so we have, you know, really kind of help develop where that is. Our strategic plan is still in motion, but each of those things are our guide. They're our compass for what we work on. So I want to kind of just talk a little bit about how this process is working. Last year, the board worked, we sent out a survey to our community. We had over 600 respondents. They came in, the board looked at all those surveys, we shared all that information, and they redid the vision, mission statement, and goals. From that point, we worked with the district advisory committee, we did other surveys, we did our school climate survey, we did a bunch of different things. We took all of that information to really understand what goes into each of those goal statements. So each goal has buckets, and in each of those buckets are specific things. So let's talk about safe and supportive learning environment. In that, there'll be a social emotional component for mental health. There'll be a facilities component, which falls underneath our capital project improvement. The substance abuse component is in there as well. There's a bunch of different things. So after we take all of those buckets, then we create goals, and then from those goals, we create action plans. So one of the goals would be, the Voorheesville Central School District will integrate and provide ongoing and sustainable universal support resources, social, emotional, and mental health awareness for our students, family, and staff. And then underneath that, we'll create action goals for each of those things. That can be the anti-bullying program, that can be a K-12 counseling program, that can be a support for substance abuse, grade six through 12, and outside of our community. So the way that strategic plan is working is we take each of those board mission and goals, we create buckets, and then we create action steps to beam them. So you should be able to see it come down, and you should easily see each of that go right back up. So that mission, vision, and goal will always be the focus of what we're doing in the district. That will be our guide. So I'm going very quick, but I will kind of go in depth as we go, but I want to be very clear on how this structure is working. For example, another one would be, the Voorheesville Central School District will create and maintain protocols and procedures that will provide a secure response to protective learning environment for all stakeholders. In that, that's risk, risk and threat assessments, bullying safety plans, evaluation procedures and partnership of law enforcement. And there's various specific actions that come from them. So we have the goals, miniature goals, and then smart goals that go along with it that all kind of go in together. So I will be talking about those monthly. Probably going to get very sick of hearing it. You'll get reports on those, but I kind of want to share that kind of information. Any questions? No, it was quick, but.
Glory.
Yeah, that's the goal, right? And it all stems from, we didn't want to do it quickly. This is a year and a half process that got us to this point. Now we're finally where we can start making these living documents that will make change happen over five years. My goal of a strategic plan is that it doesn't shoot in the shot, because that's usually what happens with them. So they need to be living documents that's been changing. Good? All right, last one, and that's where I am mosaic here. So John and Michelle are here tonight to kind of answer questions, go over the project a little bit, talk about the energy performance contract, and I'll give you an update of where we currently are. So we've talked about this project pretty much in depth at this point. The board also had a walkthrough of the elementary school, so they could really understand and see the project itself. We are now, we've done our seeker, we're at our 30-day mark. We'll be done with our seeker and our 30-day mark, and we can go out for a resolution for the board in October. So October 3rd really now is the timeframe. I did say it was earlier in the past, but we kind of misunderstood our seeker and our timeframe, so we're off by about 10 days. So we just had to fix that up a little bit. The seeker's off, we're getting those back. Now we have this, so we're looking at getting a resolution to the board on October 3rd that will put out to our community, the energy performance contract for vote, which will get us, it's actually a little bit more funds that John can speak about after going up for vote, and also the capital project. Those two things tend to go hand in hand, because there's going to be work done in the elementary school that has the energy performance contract involved in it, so we don't have to do a lot of demolition. It's already done. We can add to some of those projects. And also that it impacts the rest of the district as well. So that impacts high school and middle school. So that's kind of the goal of where we are. And John and Michelle can kind of answer questions and kind of go over things. Any questions before I get into John and Michelle?
I have a question. I don't know if John and Michelle are going to address it. Has to do with the state office of historic preservation. You can just address it.
So, yeah. Any building that's 50 years or older has to go to ship out to have a review. So typically, after the project goes out to the voters and gets approved by the voters, we start that process at that time. It's similar to an SED submission. You've got to take a lot of pictures, kind of describe what your plan is, and then we wait for their feedback on from their end.
Yeah, my question was on the timing. Let's do it here as well, because we have site disturbance.
And one of the other things is going to be, like, the front entrance of that building, that's going to be an important thing for your ship out, because it has to match the remaining, you know.
I don't want to sound presumptuous, but if this all kind of passed, when might a community vote out?
The community vote is going to be the week of December 6th. That would be, so if the board approves the resolution to go out, we would go out to their community starting on October 4th. And then we'd have, start having that conversation across the board. We have to go out, it's 45 days, right? From that point, we want to give ourselves a little window. We don't want to do it during Thanksgiving break, so really, December 6th, the week of December 6th, is our next week to do that. I know there's a couple other school districts, John, you mentioned that will also be going out during that time, that week.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, we wouldn't be alone, but unfortunately, that's kind of where the window is at this point. The week of December 6th.
How's that, does that have to be Tuesday? Like, just like the one?
December 6th is Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday.
Other questions before I pass it over to John and Michelle?
Okay. Oh, wait, what, just sorry, one more. Is it two separate questions on the vote? Or is the EPC separate from?
Yes.
There are two individual questions, right? One would be obviously for the capital project, the other one would be for the additional 10% incentive.
Okay, yeah. So if the, let's go over that really quick. If the, the board can choose to do an EPC on its own, they don't get a 10% incentive rate on top of it. If you go out to the community for the vote, then you get 10% on top of that, right, John and Jim?
You get your full state aid rather than reduced by 10%. Be very clear about that. If you vote on it, our aid rate is reduced by 10%. If you only.
It doesn't go.
Cool.
Putting it out to the community gives us our vote.
An incentive to do that.
Correct. Go ahead, Jim.
So, Michelle handed out.
Do you stand at the mic so I could hear you?
Oh, sure. It's actually better for.
Thank you.
What Michelle handed out, to quote, was a little bit of information, because I'm not, I don't plan on actually covering every last tidbit tonight. It's really for the take home and kind of help nurse yourself into the differences between a capital project and EPC. Quickly, it was created by New York State Legislature in 1994. Our office has been doing them since 1996. I wouldn't say that they are done on a regular basis, but usually, when leads come up or for maybe the energy savings that need to be done for maybe districts who don't have a good ability to pass capital projects, the state allowed those kinds of organizations and headquarters of education just to approve those kinds of projects, which Jim basically just went over. They give, go get some building aid on your budget, budgetary for your energy usage and provide some aid on that, on that end. Energy projects actually are guaranteed savings for districts. Not only do you build this project, but the performance contractor actually will actually provide you a guarantee. And it's actually followed up by review every year to make sure that they are hitting those matrices that they promised in order to save you money. If they don't hit those matrices, they're writing a check backwards to make the district vote. So there is a lot of motivation on their end in order to get that work done correctly and making sure that what they're promising you to save you energy actually is saving you energy. Back in March, March 7th, we actually sent out the RFP to five different contractors. We also did a notice in the newspaper for this type of project. We, we got one response that has to do with our economy and everybody being very busy. The company that we, that are responsible is from Danforth. They have a local office here in Princeton Park. One of the things that they included in their draft proposal, because right now, we're currently in, we're in a stage where they've picked up your energy bills, run some preliminary calculations, walked through the buildings, and come back with a project roughly anywhere from 900 to a little over $1 million. The next step for them is to create an agreement with the district to do a, an investment-grade energy audit, and that will actually determine whether or not the project can actually grow in size. One of the things that they try to do is be a little conservative, because they're not really given a, you know, like, run list to actually do all of their work initially, because there's really engagement that the board will end up having with them, probably within over the next week or so. They're planning to come in and start their full-scale audit based upon your agreement the first week of October.
So, John?
Yes?
When you say grow in size, you mean increase the overall cost?
If they find any more energy savings than they originally looked at. Because obviously, there's a lot of things that are hidden. You've got unit ventilators or some air handling units, they're on the roof above the ceilings. So they kind of like take their energy bills and do like a quick calculation, see if there's energy savings. Now they're really going to get into the nuts and bolts and start combing through all of your buildings to find out if there are anything else that's out there that can end be also being energy savings from that point. And then they'll come back to the district and basically say, yours are grocery, grocery list, what do you want? What would you like to do? Because it's, it's more of a kind of like alibi kind of relationship that you have. As long as, as things are saving energy, you can actually do them to save that.
And do you expect they would have all that work completed before this goes to a vote?
Their goal is to have everything completed in four weeks as far as knowing what you can do. I have a draft, I have three options currently in my hands that have three different options, and you can actually interchange these options. So you can imagine how many, you know, opportunities that you can create. So the projects right now are ranging from around 895,000 to like $1.1 million. And, and it has a lot of things in there that need to be kind of like explained to the, to the board. I don't think we'll get into that tonight, but I'll give you one example. We're doing a lot of work at the elementary school. There was a conversation about when, when the contractors come in, do they retrofit lights or do they provide new lights? And if our position, and we've talked with the superintendent, that if we're going to do new classrooms, we don't want retrofitted lights, we want new lights. So that's the kind of conversations we have to have, because obviously, everything has a cost. Retrofitting a light is a little bit less than for running a new light. But we want to make sure that what we're doing for the district, we don't have to go back and undo something in the future. So those are kind of things that it would be good to have them explain with us, you know, and that we can kind of like share with you at the same time on what our game plan is. Nice thing about doing this hand in hand with the performance contractor is that we are, obviously, if we're running the design, we can actually oversee exactly what these folks are doing at the same time.
Thanks.
Hey, one, one other thing too is, let's say we have our desert air system. Our desert air system is basically the whole system that controls our pool air. In our current BCS, our building condition survey, our five-year, that needs to be replaced. It's going away. This energy performance contract also helps offset that, so we can get that as part of this project.
Right. Because that's, like, it's getting close to its end of the life. These guys basically said, we can save you a lot of money by changing it out now, because there's energy savings there. Can you get some more life out of it? You know, you're going to be directed to repairs over probably the next three, five years, but it's going to waste a ton of energy. These guys can come in and all of a sudden just change it up, and now you've got, you know, another 25 years to that, to that turn.
And then the building condition survey, we have a check on it, that one thing that's going to cost us a large amount of money. Now, what's that?
Isn't it 75,000?
Yeah, it's about, how much, yeah, it was about 75,000?
No, it's like a 500,000.
All right. All right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's what I kind of want to mention, is that some of these are lights and other things, but there's some very large, big-ticket items that we're putting into this that really help offset future debt risk costs, along with getting our building condition survey. So not only are we focusing on the elementary school building project, but we're also taking care of some other housekeeping items that are. Just want to mention that.
That's okay. Obviously, the energy project, very similar to your capital project, sort of like during the construction process, you'll probably not even realize who that person is. They actually perform just like they're another prime contractor, whether it's a general contractor, mechanical contractor, funding contractor, we just pull them the ESCO. Unfortunately, June actually hit a little extra work, because he has to treat it like its own separate project. So not only does he have a capital project to deal with financially, he's going to hit his ESCO project. So most of this work will be on him. So the project has, still has to get submitted to the state ed. The only thing I will share with you, it does take a little longer, because not only do they review the plan and specifications, they will review your agreement with the ESCO. Again, it's going to have your energy segments in there. Typically, when we submit a project, since we state ed for this, it'll go in with like a draft agreement. One of the comments that we'll get back from SED near the end is, they'll want to see the actual signed contract, but we'll come back, the superintendent, make sure that gets done in that, in that process. And that becomes the agreement that SED will actually finally look at and approve it before we actually get our building prepared in order to construct that.
John, has state ed ever refused to approve one?
No, they, one of the things that they'll usually come back, they'll always have some kind of calculation issue that they'll question. But when we sit down and go through that with our engineers, we're pretty good going in. Energy projects can't exceed like a 18-year payback. So what we usually try to do is, is go and go to SED initially with somewhere around 15.9 to 16 years, because anytime they'll ask for something extra, obviously, it costs more money, because they're never going to come back with a comment that's basically is, that's none. So we basically, we want to make sure that we're still under that 18-year payback in order to make sure that we have approval of the project.
So another question, how does it work with maintenance, right? So let's say it's a, it's an energy-efficient light bulb, but it burns out.
They actually will provide the district with a, like a, kind of like a maintenance contract, so to speak, that, you know, they will, they come back on a regular basis to check and make sure those things are still functioning. And it's also part of this yearly review. So that, so I believe for the first three years, they are here on a regular basis to check and make sure all those, everything is functioning the way it was designed. And then it becomes a yearly process after. So if your LED bulbs are going to burn out, they're going to burn out within probably the first three years of that, that service package, because obviously, they're, you know, anywhere from seven to 10-year of lifespan.
So the maintenance cost though, or is it an additional charge?
I know, it's also part of the energy performance contract. If you decide to vote later on, like, you want to extend it, then there'll be probably be an additional charge. But there is a period that you get as far, part of the project. And when you, when you talk to, or if you'd like to talk to the contractor themselves, they can certainly explain that to you at the same time. So that, well, you know, everything is kind of like, we try to put everything together that we can in order to make sure that your life is easy when you track one of these folks.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we account for, you know, all the costs, like the whole complement of services that we're in.
Well, the energy contract has to include all fees. That's, that's no architectural engineering fees, should include your financial folks' fees. The only thing that I would say we won't include, and we were going to plan on including this in the capital project, is specificity, because there's no savings invading anything. Okay? So that's another one of the nice reasons when we try to delve down these together, we can actually have the abatement contractor do that work without reducing the overall efficiency of your energy performance project. So I also included like a little, little comparison table for you, for you to look at. It kind of talks about, and I guess some areas that I'll end up, you know, I'll take a hit on it, because, you know, when they talk about change orders, there's no change orders, because in your project, you are, it's a fixed cost. So if there's something that these folks had missed, they're going to need it and have to provide, because again, they're guaranteeing their savings. So there's no, there's nothing that can be missed here. These guys all sign on, whether it's, you know, Danforth, the contractor that we, that we're talking to, or any other performance contractor out there, they all live under those same terms and conditions. And I'll have to say that in a referendum project, usually their change orders will crop up.
It's almost a guarantee.
It's, you know, it's, it's part of our business. When you start taking walls down, you're going to run into things that you did not plan for. The other thing we'll talk about a little bit about performance contracting is how do we finance? If you live, having two options, one, you'll either go down the road with the police, or you can choose to bond that also. And that's usually a district decision and a conversation with your financial advisor on which is the better route to go. Again, this whole, this whole comparison is kind of like, kind of explains how an energy project and the referendum project kind of go hand in hand, or what are the distinct items that each provide. But, you know, I think when you look at it, you'll, you'll start to see there's a lot of, the guarantee obviously is the big thing that you should kind of be focused on for that, from that point of view, because obviously, you want to make sure that you feel comfortable with working with an Esco. Let's see, what else can I? The construction process is very much the same. We are onsite, like we are with the capital project, and reviewing the work that's being installed. Payment applications go the same way. They're all, they all get submitted to us. We go out and verify that the work was done before we allow the contractors to actually get paid. So there's, you know, those, it's a very, again, in that aspect, it's very similar to your capital projects, as far as how the contractor votes about doing their work and how payment is made to them. The only, yeah, thing that we've really got to work on right now, I think, is this energy audit and getting those guys ready to do their, their job within the next, within the next three weeks.
Jim, that is, there is cost to the district in that.
If you decide not to continue the process years, I don't know exactly what it was, I don't know if you've received your.
I think it was called a thousand, but they haven't given me a letter yet.
Okay. The district should be getting a letter soon on what, what those costs are. Obviously, they're part of the energy performance project if you go forward.[1789.18] Typically, at some point, and I've always said this to Frank, that it's, you can cancel at any time. And if you don't get, now you're going to get to that point when you get that letter, engagement letter, that's when you have to decide on whether or not you want to continue that or not. But we know that we do have a project that's viable, and I think that's a great first step on recognizing, you know, that's where we want to go.
And will, will that report show the change, not just in, in financial savings, but in the footprint of the school district as well?
Well, obviously, that changes your footprint.
Uh, sorry, the carbon footprint.
Oh, which, yes, yeah. They will show you how, how much energy savings that you are expecting to, to achieve. And again, it's going to, it has to do with your, your budget. So if you're budgeting like a hundred thousand millimeter for utilities, obviously they're going to, they're going to guarantee that you're going to save so much money. So you'll still continue to budget your, for your energy part, it will go toward your new energy bill, the other part will go toward either your bond or municipal lease and how you want to finance it. Right, and the nice thing about all of that is that also the building aid is actually an additional incentive. Either you can use it to put it in the bank or lower the local share of your capital. And Jim, can you actually write a few more about that?
Do you want to just explain that real quick?
So because there are two revenue streams when it comes to an EPC, the cost savings as well as the state aid, you're, you're going to be receiving more in than you pay out. So at that point, let's call it, just using a number, fifty thousand dollars per year extra is coming in, whether it's through state aid or production. At that point, you can say, okay, that fifty thousand dollars would be, you know, a point zero two five production in the tax levy that we are going to have to apply to get the construction project. So that, yes, we believe it's two point five, but it may be two point two two five, you know, instead. So it saves a little bit of money for people, it saves a little bit of money for the taxpayers, and it's a nice offset that you can do with the energy.
And we're trying to be forward thinking in our projects, but also be understanding of our taxpayers and not burdened to the point where, you know, we're only asking, 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 we're always trying to figure out what can we also kind of get back and try to maximize our funds as best we can. That's why we're looking at this road of putting the two together. Any questions?
Yeah, have you worked with Danforth before?
The answer is yes. I actually have a few projects that are currently ongoing with them. We just finished a project up in Salem with them. Where else did I, let's see, energy projects, Cambridge, this project there with them. We've got a, as I said, we've got four or five different projects going on. They're also very good mechanical contractors, so I have them as, as prime contractors also and not just ESCOs. They actually do this work as, also as part of their offer.
Given the fact that we have one bid?
Yep.
If we are approving this, we're approving contract damage?
Uh, it would be, that's correct. And, you know, but I'll tell you, I, I'm kind of shocked that we didn't get more interest. When I did reach out to some other people that I work with on a regular basis, whether it's Day Ovation or Amaranth Scout, these people are just buried with work and they just don't need any more work to put in their, into their backlog because they can't guarantee it. Now, I will say, and this also has to go with the capital project, the nice thing about voting a little later this year and not planning really, we've got a lot of work done next summer, is mechanical limits are still, you know, anywhere from six to seven months for delivery, believe it or not.
Believe it.
Believe it. So, you know, and these aren't, these aren't the residential stuff, this, this is, you know, very complicated technology that we're, we're installing. And it takes a long time, some, some of it's coming from overseas.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll leave you with this. The, if you decide, obviously when you get this engagement letter, if you'd like to move forward, I would suggest that we get a meeting amongst yourselves and let's see if we can get these guys moving based on their timeline. It would be nice to get some hard information from them before we go out to vote. You know, we kind of, I, I got a, I kind of got a feeling of, you know, if we basically say it's like a million dollars and maybe we write a resolution that says it won't exceed a million and a half dollars, and so if they did find any additional energy savings, we wouldn't actually shoemort ourselves into a lower cost project. And we can certainly help work through that through your legal folks to make sure that that's all written correctly. And then we can start picking and choosing what items are important to the district in order to get as part of this project. And also the nice thing about having this kind of a project is there makes an opportunity for alternative capital. You know, the people keep saying recession, recession, you know, personally, I don't see it. But if it does actually come, you know, this would be a perfect time to get a little more bang for the buck that you're actually voting.
John, as part of the bid process, did they provide references?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Did we check them?
Yeah, and there, and there's no reason that you should go through a, an interview process if you decide to do that. Yep, they can certainly explain some-
We were looking at having a special meeting at the end of September with Danforth coming in to be able to explain all this.
Okay.
I can also provide a list of questions that you may want to ask them. Said I've been doing this for twenty-six years, and we've, we've pretty much put together a list of questions that you may or may not want to ask, but there's, there's everything that's in there about, you know, who's the workers, you know, it's different than, you know, it's, who's, who's coming to the job site every day? And who's our point of contact? People ask those questions, then I'd say, you should be asking those questions or those things. So they, you know, like, just like our firm, they have the people who actually go out and do the estimating. We have people who actually do the construction in the field. They also have their supervisors who are actually their project managers, who are watching their employees do their work. Because you always have to have another set of eyes because is everybody paying attention to it? Because some people are, are task oriented, they're just paying attention to this. But the project manager is actually watching the entire project going on, make sure that we don't, they don't have to go back and undo something in order to make something continually set, fitted and small, so. Anything else? If you've got questions, I have to break through what I've left you. Please go through the superintendent, we'll get back to you as quickly as possible on answering those questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions on the project itself after you saw the facility?
Yeah, we, we, we've got our thumb drives with the capital project questions if you need to-
You saw the facility, we went through the project here, you now kind of see it.
Anything new with the retaining wall?
Nothing new on that. One of the things that we are currently working on is coming up with a number of different wall solutions that we want to make sure that we run by the district and ensure you're happy with. You know, we're a stone, we're always trying to look at the estimating piece and see if earthwork is actually going down in price at all. It is remaining stable, we're currently still feel comfortable with the estimate that we put together. But, you know, we can certainly look at different configurations of the wall, whether it's we stack something or we pour a giant concrete wall, or we, you know, the concrete wall could be a panel system, you may see that in like state highway abutments where there's like a little relief built into some of these things. You have all those kind of abilities with some kind of, of, of poured in place pan that we could do. I can get some photographs of it containing what we did at Lake Placid a few years ago, came up very, very nice, kind of using the same consultant. So I'm confident that we can come up with something that we will be at.
Thanks, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
All I got.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Would anyone like to move that? All right, anyone second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our action items are, and it's five point one, the personnel items. And then we have five point two, the CSE recommendations, and the substitute teacher appointments, five point three. I think we can take all those together, are there any questions or thoughts on this?
I'll vote those.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Other business, would you like to review the audit committee meeting?
Sure, so audit committee met earlier this evening. We reviewed our regular agenda items, including the school lunch profit and loss bond, our functional summary document outlining our projected and encumbered expenses and our actual expenses, which is now posted along with the audit committee materials. We also reviewed our claims auditor report and the exceptions that were found, discussed some of those. And we talked briefly about the plan for our external audit, which we expect should be completed by the November seventh audit committee and board meetings.
That is, right, curriculum, I don't think there was some-
We haven't had a meeting, or we do have one scheduled for September twenty-seventh, three thirty PM. And our new policy is that it has to be in person.
Is that three thirty?
That's when it is, that's what it's scheduled for. We may need to make some adjustments, okay, so there might be a change of time, but it's got to be in person.
Yes.
And, and they had been virtual in the past. I am going to talk with Frank and with Karen and maybe put out a little invitation out to members of the board to say, are there things you would like the curriculum committee to address as we go into this first meeting? So I'll get that email out soon.
Thank you. All right, facilities, you guys meet tomorrow?
We meet tomorrow, we last met on August eighth, and since we had a late meeting last month, we've already talked about it. Tomorrow at four thirty.
The board hearing about it on the third?
Mm-hmm.
And policy?
Policies, we meet on the twenty-second, so we have a mess of classes.
The board hearing about it on the- All right, we have a bit of new business, the board discussion. Looking over our meeting from the seventeenth, we wanted to just confirm, and our plan is to meet tonight in executive session to review. We had seven applications and we'll review them tonight in executive session, and that would be a meeting of the board members. But not the board, sorry. So just the board members would be there. Hopefully we'll reach consensus, and if we don't, we'll reconvene and discuss a future date. I think that was our consensus, if there are any questions? So we wanted to just make sure that that was something we all were there, and that is understood. And then we had a board discussion about the NISBA delegate and I'm, there's a NISBA business meeting coming up on October seventeenth. And I can sit in on that if everyone's comfortable with that, no one else is sitting so before, everyone else is like finger to the nose. Thanks, all right, so we need a resolution.
See how many resolutions there are?
No, we don't, all right.
Just need to, to met with the delegate.
That's me. Yes.
You're going to be a busy, busy lady there.
Yes, so what we also, if you guys look over the resolution pages and if there's things that we have questions about, we can, please let me know for October third. By October third, if I haven't heard from you, I'll just go with what I think that is the most representative of the board. All right, no resolution there. And, but the pilot agreement, we had it changed thanks to RG.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yep.
Okay, so do we, we just vote on that one? So would anyone like to move the pilot project forward to vote?
I'll move it.
Anyone like to second?
Second.
Okay, then, Robin, Robin, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we move to other business, this is the second opportunity for the public to be heard, particularly to provide an opportunity to comment on any topics covered in the meeting agenda. If members of the public wish to address the board at this time, we will do so following the same guidelines as during the previous comment period. Anyone? All right, opportunity for the board to be heard. I want to thank Frank and Jess and the team who put together the new tables, they're just very nice to go see. Thank you very much. Dates to remember, it seems like we may be having a special meeting that might be on September twenty-seventh in the evening for EPC to Danforth. We'll send out a message if that's going to happen, but otherwise we have a board meeting scheduled for the third. And that's it for this, we need to make a motion to go into executive session. Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will finish the executive session and then likely close the meeting out. And Frank says we'll turn off the lights and lock the door.